The Chairman of the Lee County Committee Board of Commissioners called the meeting to order on this, the second day of June 2008, to conduct all matters which would be properly brought before the body. Our first order of business is our invocation. Commissioner Shook will deliver that, and I ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, heads. Our heavenly and gracious Father, as we meet today to conduct the business of the county citizens, we give thanks for this beautiful day and all of the many blessings you have bestowed upon our county, our state, and our country. We give thanks that we are able to live in a country where citizens elect their government representatives and a country in which government business is openly debated. We give thanks for the personal freedoms we enjoy. As elected officials at all levels of government meet today to conduct the people's business, keep them ever mindful of the limited role of government over the lives of its citizens. Grant us the wisdom and guidance to make decisions that are not only pleasing in your eye, but also to those who have elected us to this governing body and who have entrusted us to be their voice in government. All we ask, all this we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now recognize Andrea Curran for the presentation of the Employee of the Month.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Employee of the Month Selection Committee has selected Lieutenant David Prevett of the Lee County Sheriff's Department as Lee County's Employee of the Month for June 2008. Lieutenant Prevett has been employed with the Sheriff's Department since December 2006 and currently serves with Special Operations Division. As a member of the Sheriff's Department Special Operations Division, Lieutenant Prevett is responsible for coordinating the department's special programs, including, but not limited to, the Highway Emergency Action Team, also known as HEAT, Community Watch and Community Stop Programs, serving juvenile petitions, and conducting drug searches utilizing, I think it's BB?
Yes.
Our drug dog for Lee County. In addition to his regular duties, Lieutenant Prevett is well-known for going beyond his job description to implement community programs. These programs have included the implementation of the local law enforcement memorial to the area's fallen officers and the recent Senior Appreciation Day. The Senior Appreciation Day was a recognition luncheon for Lee County citizens over the age of 60. Lieutenant Prevett developed and implemented this program by coordinating not only with his coworkers, but many other local agencies, including the Enrichment Center, Broadway Police Department, Sanford Fire Department, American Red Cross, Central Carolina Community College, Lee County Emergency Management and Fire Marshal's Offices, and Central Carolina Advanced Life Support. As stated by the nominator, although I do not work with Lieutenant Prevett on a daily basis, I felt compelled to nominate him based on my involvement with the Senior Appreciation Day. David worked diligently to implement a program that reached over 450 senior adults in our community. His efforts have made a difference in the community and have helped establish a newfound respect for the Sheriff's Department among the senior population. Everyone in attendance came away with a better understanding of the community services available to them. The committee felt that based on the recommendation and Lieutenant Prevett's dedication and loyal service to the Lee, to Lee County, he should be awarded Employee of the Month. Therefore, the committee respectfully asks that you join us in awarding Lieutenant David Prevett Employee of the Month for June 2008 in recognition of his service and commitment to the safety and welfare of Lee County citizens.
I'm very humbled to accept this award and knowing that I'm working beside a bunch of great employees each and every day, so thank you, I appreciate it.
David, if you'll come forward, please. Congratulations. You and I have worked together for quite a while. We've been in almost all the schools, doing code reads and everything else before you went to the Sheriff's Department. We have a star award for you, also a certificate Employee of the Month, June 2008, Lee County Government recognizes David Prevett for going above and beyond regular duties to be an outstanding employee. And a couple of other things. First of all, Chief, he gets a day off the page. A certificate for a Boba John pizza, a certificate from the food gallery, and one from Coca-Cola. Again, congratulations.
Yeah, that's a good vibe.
I notice we do have one addition to one of the items on the consent agenda. You have it in your packet in front of you. We will make that a part of that recommendation.
Which one is that?
Item E.
You say you're gonna pull that, right?
No, we're adding that, and we're adding this letter to that. Not changing.
You're adding that to the consent agenda?
Right.
Okay.
Are there any questions concerning the consent agenda?
I'm gonna pull B.
Item B.
I've got a question on item E.
And I think item E, we're gonna have to pull, and, because it's going to have to be approved pending that the Lee County Schools approve this, and they're not going to decide on that until June 9th, on the COPs 2008 school grant. So I don't know that we can approve that grant without knowing that the Lee County Schools aren't going to participate in that.
We probably want to discuss that. That's Lieutenant Prevett's item, pull that and discuss that.
Okay, you want to add it to the new business?
Yes, sir.
All right. And you want to add item B to the new business?
I do.
Okay.
I have a question on item E.
You would be item E under new business, you would be item L under new business.
Sure.
Any other concerns about the consent agenda?
I just want to know if the charter schools are included in this effort? Does anybody know that? They can be. You don't have to be notified?
Yes.
Okay. Now, it's item E, right. I would like to pull item D and move that to our agenda on the 16th. Do I hear a motion that we do that?
Are you talking about new business now?
I'm talking about the item D under consent.
I would ask if we allow the Press and Deeds Office to explain the contract while they're here.
Okay.
I'm not in opposition to what you're doing, is while they're already here, we can listen to what they have to say about it.
Well, you had a question about it, and that's the reason I was gonna put it off till the 16th. If they make, make their, you want them to make their presentation or talk about it today?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll make that item G under new business. Are there any concerns about the regular agenda? There are none, I would entertain a motion that the consent agenda and the regular agenda would be approved as amended. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. The items that have not been pulled from the consent agenda, do I hear a motion that they be approved?
So ordered.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. It's a so order. All right, we come to our public comments section, and we have one who has signed up to speak, and it's Mr. Keith Clark. I would remind you that you have three minutes. Clark.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I want to begin by saying that some time ago, I began to make public information requests of the county and found some disparities between the published policies and the law. Your previous county manager, Mr. Hoyle, who is quite a distinguished attorney, and I sat down and we worked out a procedure that follows and meets the law, and I want to commend your clerk for being absolutely completely responsive in furnishing completely and fully anything that she has had within her ability to do whenever a request has been made. So I would like to compliment you and Mr. Hoyle and Gaynell for being completely compliant because of that has been an issue with regard to the grant for the incentive grant, but that problem really didn't originate there, is what I want you to know. They're doing an excellent, an excellent job. What I want to speak to you tonight, today about, is the importance of opening your finance committee meetings to more public scrutiny. It is very difficult to find out when they will be held. I do not know if you have a minimum notice that you give the public or not. I do not know where notice of those meetings are published. And I do not understand why you do not hold those meetings in this room where they can be reported and put on the web as you do these meetings. Sanford City Council had theirs open, they closed them. It was an issue in their election. Immediately after that election, they got the message and restored their finance committee meetings through their television station. So I strongly encourage you, because this subject will not go away, to have your finance committee meetings announced and agendas published, and most importantly, that they be broadcast so that the public can have a record and see what takes place in these important meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. We have a public hearing scheduled at this time to consider economic development project with Lee County Economic Development Corporation for the 3M Manufacturing Company. Before I recognize the EDC representative to present this, I would like to make a statement. May the 22nd, this public hearing was advertised in the Sanford Herald. At that particular time, we did not have the backup information. We requested the backup information. We did not receive it until late Thursday, and the first thing Friday morning, the county manager and the clerk proceeded to distribute that information. I did not get the information until after 11 o'clock Friday morning. Some people have been concerned and critical of the fact that it appeared that we were withholding information. This board has never withheld any information and will not in the future, as long as I'm in the chair. But we did it as soon as we could and as soon as we had the information. So I now recognize Mr. Hughes to tell us about the 3M request.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to have a public hearing on this economic development project. We have a company called 3M here in this community since 2006 that's interested in expanding their facility, adding new equipment, and then retrofitting a facility to accommodate that equipment. 3M is located at the Simpson Industrial Park off Russell Road here in Sanford. They occupy four buildings totaling over 200,000 square feet. Simpson and, Simpson Industrial Park is on the east, southeast side of Sanford. They employ currently approximately 180 people. All the buildings are leased for five years with a five-year additional option. They required, or they acquired the static division from Static Control and JJ Converting back in 2006. They produce anti-static bags, that's how they kind of got started, and then a lot of other accessories to prevent the static damage to electronic components. The primary component of their operation here in Sanford is that film coding facility, and that's the equipment that they're hoping to expand here, and that is really the piece that gives them the edge in terms of that product line that they have. The product, project is anticipated to generate over $140,000 in new taxes for the city and the county over the next five years, based on the information we have today, based on the tax rates, based on the values. $140,000 in taxes. The grant that is proposed and is recommended by EDC to this board and to the city board as well is based on 50% of the taxes and to be had over five years by the company. And that's, that's the basis of it. The public hearing notice, as the chairman indicated, was put in the paper on May 22nd. The law, the general statutes that allows cities and counties to be part of an economic development project require that those projects or those public hearings be noted at least 10 days before the meeting, and we put that notice in the paper. In that notice, we talk about the EDC and the county and the city participating in an economic development project for the 3M Corporation to manufacture. In that, it also states the amount of money that the county would be considering at the public hearing, the $40,463. And those, those dollars would be, obviously, that's 50% over the next five years of what they would be paying, so half of what they'd be paying in taxes. So the information's there, the, in terms of what the public hearing is all about, and I didn't know if there were any additional questions. You also have in your packet, let me just finish up my desk, an agreement that's been drafted between the county, the city, and the EDC. In that agreement, it clearly, it spells out the obligations of the company to the EDC and then to the EDC, from the EDC back to the county and the city. It states the days or the time and the days that the payments are actually made to the company from the EDC, and then the amounts and what the dollars would be used for, so do you have any questions about that?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I will now open the public hearing to hear those who have signed up to speak for or against this recommendation from the EDC. Now recognize again Keith Clark. I would make note that three minutes is still the limit.
Mr. Chairman, I want to call a couple of matters to the attention of the board. I think the public perception of these grants is that they are designed to increase the number of jobs and to increase the wages that are being paid, average wages that are being made within Lee County. This agreement, if you look at Exhibit B, which is 11 of 26 pages of the agreement between Lee and the group, I can't give you time to look there because of my time schedule. If you take a look at this agreement, I'm sorry, page 2 of 26 of the Agreement Regarding Incentive Funds, they must provide employment for up to 10 people. Now, I believe if you asked Mr. Hoyle what up to 10 people means, it could mean as few as one part-time employee. Does not even guarantee 10 people, but potentially, one or even a part-time employee is all that is guaranteed in terms of employment by this agreement. Secondly, in terms of wages, all that is to be paid in wages, of course, this is progress for those people who would get the raise, is the average wage paid here in Lee County. So there's nothing about this agreement that guarantees a significant increase in jobs or a significant change in pulling the wage structure up. It does improve the tax base, and there are other factors for you to consider, but I was absolutely astounded to find that we are considering giving out incentive grants for jobs that, with provisions that actually do not require the employment of people and the employment at wages that exceed the average being paid here in Lee County.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Recognize Thillis Lyons.
Well, I'm against giving the money away. There's too much in our county now, especially Lee Senior, that needs money to get it back. We don't have a decent school, so if I give them plants that's got plenty of money, and no more they were gonna hire, as he said, there was no proof that they were gonna hire that many, and then they pull out and leave. How many times did y'all give money to one of them out there, and right after you gave him money, they let off 60 people? That didn't sound too good. But y'all have got to start thinking about what Lee County and the city of Sanford needs. And the first thing we need, y'all need to do is take that 70,000 you wanted to give to him and give it to Lee Senior, if you've got the money to give away. Well, I thought we done stupid the other year with the golf course and the airport. Y'all giving money to it when we got a school over there, nothing fitting for the children to go to. My grandchild's children, or my, my children went there, but my grandchildren do not, and I will not have no great-grandchildren going there either, because they're out of town or out of state. But there's more children over there than 10 people. But you got about 1,000 students over there, could be more. I don't know exactly what Lee Senior cares, but they're graduating. And you need something decent where they can learn in. And I don't know why that school wasn't kept up. I don't know why Johnsburg School wasn't kept up. I worked at Johnsburg School. It was kept up while I was there. Every fall, when we'd come back, it had been painted inside. They lowered the ceilings, they put new carpet in, and when we left it, it looked better than it was when they sent us over to Deep River School, not Deep River, Broadway School. It was in better shape than what Broadway School was. So evidently, after we moved out, there was snow and done to the school. And it's after about 50 years, there hasn't been anything done to Lee Senior. So take some of this money y'all giving to plants and stuff, and help, I think you need to help what we need here before giving the money away, giving our tax money away. The taxpayers need just to get together and start giving their tax money to the school and give it to something that, that we can show what's being done, not something that's gonna pull out and move. You can't trust the plants. They got money that can just pull out anytime they want to pull out. And a lot of them hate. Out where I live, GKN's gone now. All these, and several's gone. So they don't have to stay. Yeah, I got to talk all day, so.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Recognize John Daniel.
Mr. Brown, I'm normally referred to Bob. Bob wanted to go first on this.
Oh, okay.
Just to speak for.
Yeah, I'd like to go on record, also to speak for providing this incentive to this company. 3M is a great company. It's obviously the kind of company that has all kinds of opportunities to grow even further. We need this to, to make sure that they do whatever they're going to do here in Sanford versus anywhere else in the world. They, they meet the criteria of the EDC, EDC, the city of Sanford, and the Lee County, and Broadway's economic development incentive policy, so that's the reason this EDC group recommended to provide this to the company, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hughes. All right, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good morning. I'm John Daniel. I serve as Chairman of Lee County Economic Development Corporation, and I wanted to, to speak in favor of the, of the proposal this morning for a couple of reasons, if I may. The project, first of all, went through scrutiny of our board, and we endorsed it unanimously based on facts that we thought that it would, would increase and do good things for our county overall. I also want to clear up some concerns that I've heard from a couple of commissioners and from the public about the fact that this company is, leases property there. I will, I will tell you, and I'll default back and tell you, I did a study for Mr. Jawiski, who is Chairman of Real Estate for 3M Corporation, determining whether they should buy or continue to lease. I'll also preempt, there was no conflict of interest in this. They approached me, and I certified and signed that there was no, none of this was a part of my employment. But I do have before you, which is proprietary to them, but their study that they tried to buy. But I also want to remind the board that it's not so, there's a lot of companies that do not own real estate. They have leases that go through 10 years, and a lot of times, owning real estate is not the best way for a large company to do. I will, may I approach, Your Honor? I will hand Mr. Paul the addenda to the, to the report, which will show you some pictures. You're welcome to look at it. It has copies of all the leases, so you can see that they do have control of that property for another 10 years. Another thing, I wanted to make sure, there've been some comments, the economic basin here is coming from the tax that they pay on that real estate. Those are net leases. If you look at those leases, they pay them. The property owner's not getting a break from that. And the fact of the matter, and I think this board does know it, respect- And the fact of the matter, and I think this board does know it, respectfully to the paper, I'm disappointed that the headline said that we're giving them. We're not giving them money. They are being allowed not to pay taxes for the period that they have asked for, and then they will come back and pay a hundred percent. So we're not just giving them money for them to do something else with. Those monies are not available to go to the schools or whatever needs we have anyway. So I'll try to answer questions if you need, but I'd like, I need to get that back unless Mr. Jawiski gives me permission to let the board keep it. But you're welcome to look through it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all who have signed up to speak either for or against the proposal. I will now close the public hearing. And the chair makes a motion that the Board of Commissioners not discuss this matter at this meeting, but that we table it until the sixteenth, the second meeting of this month because of the lateness of getting the information on Friday. Do you hear a motion to do that?
So moved.
Motion's been made, any discussion? All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. And I thank all who participated. Moving on to new business. Recognize Mike Hines, consideration of regulation of private drinking water wells.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. I am here today before you to bring you information on action taken by the North Carolina General Assembly in regards to private drinking water wells. There is, this, this law, these rules are very, very similar to our current county rules. And by the way, we, we permit about two wells per month, so there's not a big volume in it. But our board has recommended that we adopt these state rules to be effective July one. One, because they're very similar, and because we are also, if we reinvented will and passed our own rules, we would not have, we would be assume all liability for that. It's much like our regular environmental health rules, where they are state rules and where we have assistance and liability coverage, so.
Mr. Chair, I will move accept the recommendation of the Health Board.
All right, motion's been made to accept the Health Board recommendation. Any discussion?
I have just a couple of questions. When you said, very similar to our state laws with few exceptions, what are those exceptions?
Um, I, there is one, the state rules do not require a ten-foot setback from the property line. That's one issue which we would like to, if we can, continue. And Roy Warren, our expert on all of the rules, is here, and maybe he would like to comment a little further on that as far as exceptions.
Um, the rules are very, very similar.
You all come to the podium, please.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
The rules are very similar, and the ordinance that we have been using in Lee County for probably close to thirty years, we have to be equal to or more stringent than the state rules that we've used in the past. The difference in the rules that we've got now is there's a ten-foot setback to a property land that's not included in the state rule, because that does not actually affect well. And then the other, other changes are, the state will be requiring us to do more extensive sampling of new water wells. And those, those are the two basic, basic changes or differences.
So this doesn't really affect people who have had wells for a while? This is basically in the permitting and drilling of new wells?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
How do you adopt the state rules to continue to enforce the ten-foot setback?
You can do that as part of the condition of a permit, just write it on the permit. If someone did challenge us, though, we would not have a law that would say that it had to be ten foot. So a person could put one closer to ten foot unless the county would include that in a county ordinance. And if they did, they would assume a hundred percent of the liability of that program. I think we should let our rules expire and adopt the state rules.
Any further question? Motion's been made. All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. Thank you.
One other.
You got another one to record?
Yes, sir.
On temporary food establishment fees.
Yes, sir. Subject is temporary food establishment fees. This is in reference to the food stands that are operated typically, say, at the, at the county fair or pottery festival. The Attorney General of North Carolina has rendered an opinion that these stands that we inspect and approve, and have been doing so for many, 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 many years, are also subject to a fifty-dollar permit fee. And so, effective July one, we will, in addition to inspecting and permitting these stands, we will be collecting a fifty-dollar fee. We estimate this to be about twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars of additional revenues, so it's not a lot of money. It does help compensate for the time that it takes, and usually these things are on the weekends. It also has a provision that, that for separate, for separate events, if you are a food stand, and let's say you operate at the state fair this week, first week in the month, and then you operate at the pottery fair, now they're not in time connected, but a second event would necessitate a second fifty-dollar fee. And this is, there's, as we understand it, there is really no choice here. This is just the way the law is being interpreted at this time.
How's it work with, say, you have a vendor that's at Kmart or Walmart or something, and just sell hot dogs every day?
Sell hot dogs every day.
If they, if they did it every day, they'd have to have some type of permanent permit.
For every day?
For every day. The temporary food stand is, is the food stands that we have at the county fair annually or the pottery festival. And then there are certain organizations that are exempt, like churches and fire departments and things like that. But if an individual, like anyone in here, wanted to set up a stand to make money, then they would have to get a permit, temporary permit, and it would cost them fifty dollars each time.
What's the time period, though, on that? How long does that last? How long can that person that is selling hot dogs at Kmart?
I believe it's about two weeks.
Two weeks. And then they have to reapply for another permit?
Yes.
Okay.
And, but if they change locations, or if it's a different event, then it would be a new permit for every site.
Gotcha.
How would that affect concession stands, say, like for something that, one of the sports events that goes on?
It won't affect those. Not, not unless it was an individual trying to make money. If it was somebody like the civic organization, or the county, or a school raising money, they're exempt from being charged these fees.
What about these mobile units that go from place to place?
They're, they're permitted. They're permitted as a mobile food unit, and they do an annual, they have, already have to get a permit every year, and it costs them fifty dollars a year as it is, one time a year.
Do they pay it one time?
Yes.
And what does somebody get for their fifty dollars? Who does the inspections? How detailed are the inspections, or how, you know, is it just a matter of filling out the paperwork and?
No, it's, it's, it would be an inspection just like any other food inspection that we do. The rules that govern temporary food stands are very simple. They're not like the rules that you have in restaurants, but they do cover the basics of food sanitation and safety. And someone from the environmental health section that's authorized to do those inspections must go there, must inspect everything, their equipment, their hot holding and cold holding, and their sanitation rules. And usually, it probably, would probably have at least an hour invested in that inspection. And these are on the weekends and then, and the evenings.
So currently, the county is funding the expense for these, and now we're looking to just pay ourselves back from the people who want to operate these stands?
Yes, um, the state, for every permit that we write, the state charges fifty dollars. We don't charge that, but we get a portion of that money back, and this would be that same, we would be doing the collection for the state.
So this is just a way for the state to collect more money for work we are doing?
Yes, but we get, we get our percentage of that back.
And our percentage would be?
Um, it really varies. It depends on how well we do. If we get a hundred percent of our inspections, right now, we're getting about six thousand dollars a year, between six and seven. If we don't make, if we don't live up to our, what we're supposed to be doing for the state, then we get a much smaller percentage of that. But for the last few years, we've been doing very well and keeping up with, with the required inspections.
It's about the last nine or ten years, we've been a hundred percent except when we lost so much staff a couple of years ago.
So is the permit fee fifty dollars currently, or is this an increase?
There's no increase at all. This is the same fee that has been charged year in and year out.
But not to temporary food stands?
But not to temporary food stands. Temporary food stands, we had not been charging anything, and the only difference is, the Attorney General's office has made an interpretation and said that we will include this, and we don't have a choice. We're told that we will be collecting this fee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren. It's one of those things seemingly that we have no, no control over.
We don't have enough information to make a legitimate decision. If, if I'm understanding you correctly, this change could have tremendous impact on your inspection department.
Yes, sir.
Okay, tell me how, because if a, if a hot dog vendor's selling at different locations over the weekend, is he temporary or permanent?
Is he's over the weekend, is he like a two-day?
Every week, on the weekend, he's moving around, selling hot dogs.
All right. Go ahead, you can answer that, Roy, right?
He would, he would have to get a permit for every event that he went to.
Would that require an inspection as well?
Yes, it would require an inspection, but we've been required to do these inspections all along. And we have, Lee County does not have many of these permits issued annually. We have a few that we issue at the county fair. We issue several permits during the pottery festival, and then scattered out throughout the year, we have several permits issued. So you're not looking, looking at a lot of money being brought in, in this program. And if quite, quite many of these hot dog vendors that you're talking about that do it every weekend, they'll have a mobile food unit permit where they get a permit to sell hot dogs just like any other establishment.
So if I understand it correctly, all we're gonna do is start collecting fees for something we've already been doing?
Correct.
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 And we have no choice in the matter?
Correct.
So what is there to vote on? It's not vote, it's information only. My question is regarding a hot dog vendor who comes into town every week, and I'm trying to learn if you have any responsibility for inspecting that unit each week is what I'm asking.
Yes.
Spending your time to track it down.
That's exactly what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
So, so each time I see a vendor at Walmart's or Lowe's or out in Tranway, then I can assume that we've had some involvement that relates to inspection?
Yes, sir. The, the, it depends on what category they fall into, is how many times we inspect them. The hot dog vendor that you see at Lowe's, he has a permanent permit, so he's inspected on a regular basis. The, the.
Okay, so you have a menu that would show or advise us on who's got that kind of permit, who needs the other kind of permit?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
All right, that helps me out.
So I guess my question is, why does the state get a larger percentage of the fees than we do, since all we're doing is carrying out the laws they passed, but we've got all the expenses involved? What are we talking about with the fifty dollars? How much of that goes to the state? How much of it stays here to reimburse us for complying?
That, that can vary.
What's the highest it could be?
Um, well, I look at the totals. I haven't looked at the individual. We get between six and seven thousand annually back from the state for the fees that are collected out of everything that we do.
Out of everything over the, the food inspections?
No, no, we're only talking, I'm only talking about our food inspection program.
What's the total amount that we collect on an annual basis?
We don't collect anything.
For all of our fees in environmental health, or just the food, just, just restaurant, just restaurant-associated fees?
Just the restaurant.
Okay, I, I've got that down upstairs. I did not bring it down here.
I guess I'm just trying to find out, you know, of the total we collect, how much, what's the percentage of that total that Lee County would keep to reimburse us for our time and effort?
Let me try to help put this in, I don't, maybe this will help, maybe it won't, but, Roy, I talked about this before, and we estimate there are probably, that meet the definition of a temporary food stand, not mobile and not permanent, but of the temporary food stands and the permits that we have issued historically, it's only gonna be about twenty, twenty-five permits a year, which at most would bring in about twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year. And maybe if there's a percentage on that, it could be a little bit less, but that is a, would be an annualized amount, twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Do we have permanent employees on staff, just?
That we, we've been doing this for years and years and years. This is not, this is not new work. It is an interpretation by the Attorney General for us to put a fifty-dollar fee on those temporary food stands.
Rather than hitting them once, they hit them every time they come. That's the difference.
I believe what Ms. Shook is trying to find out is how much of the money the state keeps and how much comes back to us.
Right.
So if you, if you could, if you could check that and get the information to us?
We'll, we'll double check it. We'll be glad to.
All right. Satisfactory.
Okay.
Okay. All right, what's your pleasure on this?
The sheet on this says this is for information only. Is this anything we can act on?
This is not a choice, you know, this is information. And I, you know, that's just, it's an interpretation of the Attorney General to do, that we have to do.
Yes, sir. Why did we just put this in the Attorney General?
It's not the consent, it's just information so that we know what would happen if we started to get complaints. My question is, those in opposition that are not given permits, appeal to whom? The Attorney General's office or the State Health Board?
They would, they would come to us, I mean.
It would initially come, come to me and then to the Health Tractor, and it could follow one of two paths, it could go to the Department of Health.
I understand what I'm asking. You're changing now from one fifty dollars into fifty dollars every time you go to an event. If they wanted to appeal that, who would they appeal?
If they wanted to appeal the, the interpretation of the Attorney General's law, uh, ruling, I guess they'd have to go to the Attorney General on that.
I guess we have to know where to send them, is what I'm.
Well, if it's an Attorney General ruling, we would have to send them that.
Okay.
And it's not, it's, it's not our, it's not our decision, it's not a local decision. It is the Attorney General's.
I, I clearly understand who's, that's not what I'm asking or talking about. I'm saying an individual who suddenly decides he wants I'm saying an individual who suddenly decides he wants to refuse what is required, who would they appeal to? Whether it be your board, or do you know for fact that you send them to the AG's office or the state health board?
My, my guess, and I think the common sense would that they would have to go to attorney general, but we can ask that and find that out.
That would be the thing I recommend. Find out exactly who they come to.
That's not a problem.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hane.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roy. Moving on to the next item, Mr. Crumpson.
Yes, sir.
Talking about workers' comp.
Yes, sir. We received about sixty days ago, the two thousand eight, two thousand nine premium increase from the Association of County Commissioners Workers' Compensation Pool. I was pretty shocked by the amount. They rolled out a new piece of the premium that would actually go towards helping the pool cover their deficit in claims. So, we took a big hit, immediately went up to bid, and we received bids from the association. They rebid Wassa and Millennium. Millennium's also known as Key Risk, for those that, I don't know, don't know Millennium. But Millennium was the low bid, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. I'm recommending that we go with them. We did the same thing last year in Allen County. I called the new county manager down there, and they just received a renewal decrease for the coming year. So, I believe we'll, they have at least ten counties now, most of them in the same population category as us, having the same issues with the association. So, it kind of pains me to make that recommendation, since I used to work for the association and used to, and used to push their risk management coverages. But it's too much money to leave on the table.
John, I have a question here. This looks like a really big savings, because if I've done my simple math right here, you know, you take the eight hundred thirty-one thousand, one sixty-two, which was our current year, and you subtract the eighty-seven thousand, six forty. So, our, currently, we spend seven forty-three, five twenty-two, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And our premium for the next year, if we go with Millennium, is four hundred ninety-eight thousand. So, that's a savings of almost a quarter of a million dollars?
Two hundred and forty-five thousand and some change.
It's a no-brainer.
We, we need that savings too, because we don't have that...
What do we have in our proposed budget for this year for workman's comp?
We took the seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and added six percent to it. So, it's actually, based on what's in the budget, about two hundred and eighty thousand savings from what's, it's in the budget.
I like that.
Yes, ma'am, I do too. Especially since we need a hundred and fifteen thousand right now to cover the Q-SAP debt payment next year. So, we went and found it. And that brings the total savings to about one point two million in the budget.
Do we have a clause in there that guarantees that they're gonna cover us for a full year?
Yes, sir, we got that letter from them.
What about renewal?
There's, there's no guarantee on renewal. They're gonna re-rate us, just like everybody else does.
Renewal is guaranteed, it's not, what price is what happens.
But I will say that they have an aggressive risk management program. They're gonna work quite closely with our folks on, on helping us control our claims. And the other counties that started with them are still with them. They have not re, you know, not re-quoted them. So, I feel, I feel very good about this company and their commitment to us going forward.
All right. County manager makes a recommendation that we approve this amount for our workers' comp. Your motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion been made. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. So ordered. We appreciate you finding that savings for us.
I do too, it helps me.
All right. Mr. Crumpson requests from the city of Sanford.
I think Marshall's here from the city to help, to help with this. But the city is basically starting a program where they're trying to enhance neighborhoods around the city and starting to put into place these open passive parks. They identified this particular piece of property mainly because they've had some issues on this property. We've put some no trespassing and no parking types of signs on this piece of property and still continue to have problems with, with enforcement issues. So, they identified this particular piece. They're asking us to, I guess the letter's actually request for a donation. But, you know, Marshall, if you'd like to expand on that and what, what the city wishes to do?
I'm gonna move that we accept the recommendation of the manager and approve it. I do want you, if you will, to give me your definition of a passive park.
Generally, I think the thinking here, and certainly it's open to interpretation, but generally, a passive park in my mind, when we get substantial requests and we get new proposals for projects, generally, a passive park is intended to be where you don't have a lot of active recreation elements, softball fields, soccer fields, things like that. Typically, you might get walking trails in a passive park. You get, you get more of just kind of a scenic, if you will, natural state.
Takeout shelter or something like that.
Takeout shelter. In this case, I think what we're talking about, these small pocket, what I would call it, pocket parks would be something to help the neighborhoods. You'd be looking at adding like tot lots or playground equipment, something like that. Something that would certainly benefit the immediate residents of that neighborhood. And it really kind of ties in, as some of you have seen, as we've brought projects through the county, as well as, we see it more so in the city, and when you have more highly, densely populated projects, you'll see that a lot of the trend now is to have kind of a common green space or somewhat of an open space, kind of a passive park, if you will. I think this is what, it's similar type of, similar type of draw, trying to rebuild that neighborhood character.
Well, do you know if this will help improve the patrolling of the area as a result?
I certainly, I don't know personally. I have not had that conversation with the police department. But I think certainly for these things to be effective, typically, you need, you need a somewhat of a, a secure feeling of that folks aren't gonna go there.
Well, our, our building that we have, which it joins that, that property?
Yes, sir.
In the past, we've had to replace the windows. So, I hope if, if we give them this land and they do the part, that they'll try to remove all the rocks.
Keep those out of there. That's right.
Well, if it's just rocks, I'll accept the rock, not the gunshot.
I'll vote for that.
But I believe we've got, we've replaced some of those windows with plexiglass because it got broken out, so.
I believe you're right.
Many times, yeah. My only, my only concern, and I'm glad that, that the city has taken a lead on this community park idea, but it joins our land, and sooner or later, we're gonna be selling that building. Probably, in sometime in the future, if we did sell it. But I agree that we need to do something about that lot. Any further discussion?
The county currently maintains and runs all of the city and county parks. And this one, though, the city will assume all costs, all liability?
Yes, ma'am. As soon as we send a deed over there to them for the, for the property. And I think we, you know, we probably need to take some type of consideration from the city, like ten dollars or something like that to, so that there's an exchange of consideration here. I think Mr. Hall would probably wanna make sure that that was done.
Is there any, will there be any kind of wording in there that if they quit using for this passive park, that we get the property back?
Make the deed, make the deed feasible, if they cease to use this park or revert to the county.
And it's use changes. All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed, say no.
Make the deed so that if they decide they wanna buy that building, we'll give them that land forever.
If they cease to use this park, we revert to the county.
All right, I did not get the count of the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. I thought I heard a no vote.
I wanted to ask the, where are we?
Are unanimous?
In addressing the other surplus properties for the county?
We have the list ready. We just need to have a finance committee meeting to go over that list and then have them recommend to the board, declare it a surplus, and then we'll try to sell it and sell that property. And we, we do have a lot of property that, you know, I don't think we will be using.
Could be collecting tax revenue, right?
That's right.
All right, we move on to item E, which is added. Jamie Kelly had a question.
How you doing? I just wanted to ask the question. I only see one Lee County vendor that, that is on this bid sheet, or that was, was bid and, there's another one that did not, did not bid, and we have a carry vendor. I mean, can, can we not? I know, I've been approached by several vendors out there that feel like, you know, they're not, they're not getting adequate consideration and notice to, to bid some of these projects. And I'd be, you know, remiss if I didn't bring this up at this point.
I'm sure they understand. We actually have, have used some of the other vendors in the past, and we're running some problems. So, we, we do these projects, I periodically check behind the vendors to make sure the buildings are secure. One of the vendors that we would use had left the building unsecure, and I chose not to approach them. The other vendor that we did approach, they could not provide the exact same carpet. That's the reason why they didn't bid.
I mean, I'm sure there are a ton of carpet vendors in Lee County.
Yeah, but we have to, what we have to try and look at is, can they handle this magnitude of a job? What I, what we had done, we looked at, you know, the size of the vendors, of the companies that could do it and consider that, because there's a lot of people that, you know, work out like their trucks or just tight stuff. But it is, Lee County, we need someone that has insurance, the backing if something goes wrong as far as liability for Lee County. And that's the reason we were chose carefully, the vendors that were chose, is we felt like they can handle the size of job.
I still think that, I mean, out of all the vendors that sell carpet in Lee County, we only have one on here that's, that's given, given a bid. Nothing against that vendor, it's, it's just the fact that I think that it needs to be open to a more multitude of vendors in this county.
Well, what we're doing, you know, so we, another thing is, the tight carpet, we're trying to pick the vendors that we carry that's the tight carpet, they've already had courthouse, because we'd already put, had installed some previously. And that was another reason why we, one of those vendors, they could supply the tight carpet. I believe it's Shaw, I'm not sure on MLS what it was, carpet. And that, if you can revive, you know, the tight carpet, what it, what happens to us is, Lee County, we end up having something that we may not be able to replace. You have to be real careful, you know, and make sure you get the, you get the quality of materials that's needed correct, you know, for the job.
Do you think you could find three vendor, Lee County vendors, I mean?
I'll try.
Okay.
Be glad to. I mean, I want to know one bit. What we'll do is, we can re, you know, if you feel we need to, we'll re-secure it and request the tight carpet that, that we already have in our demand sheet. But I'd be glad to.
Are there parameters, other than carpet, that say we, you have to have X amount of insurance and do this, or? Is there a policy we need to follow when doing this type of work?
Until we come out of hand with that.
We do, in, in our risk management policy, they have to carry, I think, I believe it's a million dollars in liability insurance.
So, if they're not asked, then it's, they don't have that type of insurance, is that correct?
If, they, they have told us in the past, they did not carry that type of insurance.
Okay, and that's why we may not want to?
When they're on our premises, we wanna make sure that they have workers' comp insurance and liability insurance, because we don't wanna be responsible for their workers. And we want them to, to, you know, be liable for any of the work that's done on the property. And the issue with them not, with the one vendor not securing the building after they left, you know, anybody could have walked in that building after that period of time. So, that's, that's, you know, a real reason why we need to have that, especially at the courthouse.
How does the bid, is it, do you ask certain vendors? Is that what you do, or do we post it out?
Well, no, we don't. We haven't posted it public. Generally...
Depends on the dollar amount.
Yeah, and generally, what we do, we do a bid package. And like I said earlier, we try to pick the vendors that carry, possibly can get that tight carpet. And it's gonna, because of their supplier, because if they can't get the carpet that we've already got, what happens to us is, we end up, you know, selling different types of carpet, and then we can't, when it comes to replacement time, what we've chosen to go in the buildings, we've got the squares now, which is, you know, it's a plus for Lee County, it's because we can move the squares. But I wanted to try and stay as close to what we've already got as possible, so that we, you know, can get the necessary carpet if needed in the future. But we'll be glad to rebid.
All right, do we, do we want to table this for rebid? Or do you wanna approve Southern Carpet?
I just requested that...
I don't know much when we approve Southern Carpet. I mean, if we follow up...
And sometime in the future, I mean, just take the advice.
We've got more coming up. I've also got the...
My thing is just being fair to them. Yeah, I, I agree with that. And that's the reasons why we're trying to stay with in Lee County. I feel like it is fair to our taxpayers here in Lee County. But what we will do, we've got the library coming up, we've got the remainder of that to complete. We will, upon Mr. Crumpson's approval, we'll send it out to, you know, the other vendors, if they can revive. But in our package, we ask that they be able to provide the liability insurance and the necessary stuff. They could take us along with that, we'll be glad to do that.
Okay.
In years past, we've always tried to, you know, have as many small businesses here in the county to participate in, in these type of projects. But I definitely understand the, the need for the insurance.
Okay, Mr. Quiggle's made a motion that we approve. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's by me. Unanimous, but... All right, Ms. Shook, do you have a question?
I do. It was the grant for the law enforcement agencies, Minister for their partnering schools. And this requires a fifty percent match from participating schools in Lee County. The deadline is June thirteenth, but I think we had a letter today saying that the Lee County Board of Education would not decide until the meeting on June ninth. So, I'm thinking that maybe, you know, we need to approve this pending the fact that Lee County schools will commit to the fifty percent. Otherwise, what are we talking about in total dollars? Is this something, is there a, I don't see the amount of the grant on here. So...
No, we don't have it now right now. We're just, at this point, we're just trying to notify all the school districts, whether private charter or with the county school system. And knowing that some of these grants come in and they only have a short deadline, you only have about thirty days to operate. So, at this point, we're just wanting to know what their intentions are, so I can go ahead and start preparing some of the basic grant information that I've written in the past for them.
So, is there specific uses, like security cameras or metal detectors? Are there certain restrictions on the use of these grants? Or, I guess if I were a school board member, I wanna know, how, how much are we talking about, or how is that decided?
They can be used for camera systems, radios, locking mechanisms, lighting, metal detectors, or some of the areas that it covers.
So, you and, like, the school board would sit down, decide... So you and, like, the school board would sit down, decide what they wanted, and then that would determine the amount of the grant, or?
The school already has some considerations. They've been keeping track records of what they need. We've worked with them in the past. I've actually wrote two. There was another grant for some radio equipment. So we've written two grants for the school in the past. So they already know what their needs are. They're just trying to improve it. So this is.
I guess my bottom line is, what if on June 9th, they decide not to participate in this particular grant? What are the ramifications for us?
There, we just won't include them on the grant. We'll just go to the ones that wanted to participate.
Okay, so with the 50% matching funds from participating schools, whoever, whichever schools say they want to do this. And you come up with a plan and you pay, the grant pays you 50%, the school pays 50%, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And what, what they're going to do is, suppose Lee County schools, they're going to have to pay everything upfront. Then they're going to get a reimbursement of the 50%. So what they would in turn is they would pay, this is over a two-year period. They would pay for the project, they would turn it into the county, then they would give reimbursement, 50%. And 50% would come through us and then we would just turn the money back over to the appropriate district, whichever district it would be.
It's old, it's old school money. I mean, it, there's no, we're not going to be charged, so.
No. And if they fail to meet the obligation, then you just don't get the reimbursement they filled.
Okay, what's your pleasure? Although in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Votes carried unanimously. All right, moving on now to item D in the agenda. Ms. McInnes, would you mind coming to the podium, please?
Lieutenant, please make sure you check with the charter school.
And Mr. Reeves, you had a question?
No, sir, I just wanted to hear what was being proposed in this renewal contract.
Okay.
The main thing is it's changing from a one-year contract to a three-year. Oh, well, that's, loving systems usually writes a three-year contract, but the county has requested one-year contracts.
How long have they been?
Uh, since, well, we started out with them in 89 as far as indexing, but then with their system, we bought it and went with them. And probably about, I went in office in 94 and we were already with them. And so that would keep the fee from going up for three years.
So that's the advantage.
You're locked in.
They're locked in for three years.
That's the advantage of it, you're locked in for three years.
Are you happy with their service?
Yes.
You are.
You recommend that we approve this?
Yes, sir.
All right, draw your motion. And further discussion, although.
I want to ask this question. Have we had any input from our IP department regarding this business?
We have had, we've had, we've had some discussions. So, Ryan, do you want to?
One comment I wanted to make is, it is an extension of the contract to three years, but there is a clause to escape at any time, a 30-day notice. So that's our support behind this project. We have been looking at other solutions and we've had discussions internally. We're not ready to do that at this juncture. But due to the fact that it has language in the contract, we can terminate at any time, I don't think we'll do it.
Are we getting our money's worth?
Yes.
Put him on the spot, yes.
How much has the annual fee increased, maybe over the last five years?
It is per instrument, so our instruments have went down, so it's decreased. We pay a per instrument fee and since the recording has went down last year, it will be on the level.
What about, what about the rates, the rate per recording?
Rate, rate per recording has been the same.
It's locked in for the contract period, right? For the three-year term?
Three, three-year term and it has not went up since we went on this system.
So I guess what's the advantage for the three-year contract or the one if the rates for each recording are the same?
It's just, I guess, so we wouldn't have to write more than every year instead of over there for three years.
Convenience?
And, and, and as Mr. Graun said, there is a clause in there that gives us an escape with 30 days notice. So we don't have to keep it for three years. But if we decide to keep it for three years, we're going to pay the same premium for three years.
There's no penalty for the escape.
All right, what, what's your pleasure? Motion made, but.
You already got the motion.
Oh, okay.
Got a question.
Oh, okay. Although in favor of accepting the recommendation, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Carried unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McInnes and Ryan. All right, that completes all the new business. Now I have the manager's report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the final report on the CDVG project update is the last house was signed off on Friday. It's 100% complete, so all homes are completed. And the closeout public hearing will be June 16th. And then shortly thereafter, we'll have our closeout meeting with the state. This project is basically finished. The second item I have is, just for your information, the annual forestry service report that required to give this to us before we approved their budget. This report shows you what you're getting for your $96,000. Did you pay them for this? Reminder that legislative day in Riley is June 10th. We need to have everybody's name in tomorrow, who's going to go with us. So, so far Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Lamont, A.D.L., myself are attending. I have two additional items. The first is, the city has asked our representative to, Representative Love, to introduce legislation that would allow us to extend water, or allow the city to extend water and sewer services out into the county, unincorporated areas, under their current policies. As you remember, our discussions in the past, we've been trying to get water and sewer extended, particularly water to some areas that had wells go dry. City felt that they did not have the proper authority to contract with us. So they've asked Representative Love to introduce this legislation. Mr. Hall and I have been over the legislation. We don't see any problems with it. So, that's more for your information. The fifth item is, I'm getting a little concerned here that we haven't met on the budget. We're, June 2nd, we've got four weeks to pass one. And I hope that we could, you know, start scheduling meetings and get a calendar together on what we're going to do to get the budget passed.
All right, I guess the first thing that needs to be done is that you get together with the finance committee and before we have a workshop.
I have polled the finance committee members and Thursday at 5:30 was an acceptable time for everybody to meet and go over the budget.
All right.
I think we were, we were hoping at that time to have the budgetary and year-to-date information from the schools for that meeting. We still do not have their information that we've requested, which is concerning since all that information is public record and almost two weeks old of the request. We're entitled to see their entire budget and we don't have it. So, I don't know what y'all want us to do about trying to get that information or just wait on them.
Well, we haven't gotten a reply from the letter, the last letter that I sent out over the 72.
That's correct.
I'm going to be sending another letter today.
You want to vote on that? Or you just tell?
Yes, sir. You're the full board, environment.
All right, motion been made that we send another letter today. Uh, requesting, pointing out the urgency of the situation. Although in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. It is so ordered, unanimous. And after your meeting on Thursday, then we need to go ahead and schedule a workshop. And preferably before our next meeting, which is the 16th, so we don't have many days to work with.
I'll be able to, Ms. Mentor will be out of town on the 16th, so, but I can handle the workshop in her absence.
Mr. Reeves, after that finance committee meeting, if you want to set a date that you would like to have the workshop and inform me, then we'll call a special meeting.
I'll be fine. Not like we got a lot of money.
I won't find any. Okay.
That's it for my report.
All right, commissioner's comments. Mr. Reeves?
Uh, yes, sir. For, this is primarily for the economic development board. The director, anyway. I'd like to get a list of any company that may have pulled out and did fulfill their obligations on the incentives. And I'd also like for this board and their board, the economic development board, to consider some policy changes that would include, if a company receives an incentive package and then has a layoff, that those folks be given first consideration for rehire or new hire. And Mr. Hall can advise us on that, but that would be a consideration I'd expect.
All right, you got that. Mr. Grumpton?
Yes, sir. The, the one, the one, the one part in having them give consideration, I think you can ask them for consideration, but you can't make it a requirement in the contract. I was reading in the economic development law book this weekend, and anything you tie to hiring specifically county residents is illegal under federal law. So, you can, you can, you can dance that, dance that line there. And we just have to be careful how we would work that.
Well, we certainly recommend that they give it consideration.
Right.
It's a big question if you're reading economic, economic development law, what?
Well, just had some questions. I wanted to clear them up.
Okay. If you and Mr. Hall and.
Yes, sir.
And I'll cooperate with you in doing that. Okay, Mr. Lamont?
Just one question, right quick. John, do we take any pictures before and after, you know, like the CDVG grants that we've just completed? Something that we could use?
I think our consultant does.
Yes, sir.
I'd like for us to have something like that here, but when we go to DC or wherever. Have something to show. I think it's important that you have as much ammunition, you know, going up there working. Bob, you and I have done that several times of requesting support for these type grants. And, and this particular job here, I mean, it was handled mighty well in a short period of time and got all these particular jobs done. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the forestry service, Mark Llewellyn, and all the staff of the forestry service for that report. Because it gives actual detail of every aspect of what the forestry service does for the community. And I'm going to give my copy of this report to Jonathan here with the Hurl. I'd like for you to do a story, you know, to let people know exactly the extent of what's involved just other than going out and fighting a few woods fires, brush fires or whatever. There's a lot of management in here of land and forestry. So I'll give you this, Jonathan, if you can do something other for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me mention one thing of your request about CDVG. You may want to get with Ms. Kate Rondley, get a copy of the Wicker Project.
Right.
That'd be an excellent one along with this one.
Yeah, it shows the community output and it shows the presidential.
Right. Yes, and you may have mentioned of being in Washington and, I believe it was the year before last, there was a big threat. CDVG was going to be cut, cut or, or not included at all in the budget. And we went to work and not only us, but other commissioners who were up in DC at that particular time. And before too awfully long, we had senators walking around with that button that we had supporting CDVG. And we got all the money. So you have to stay on top of it.
You're accurate.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Um, I would like to say to all of our department heads to make sure that if we are bidding out projects, that you go and bend over backwards to provide three Lee County, at least three Lee County vendors for your projects. Because I think it's only fair that, that, I understand sometimes we get complacent and we have a vendor that we prefer or we use. And that's, you know, it's comfortable, but, you know, it's, it's also public money and we need to make sure that we're getting the best back for our love.
Okay, you.
I want to dovetail a little bit on Commissioner Reeves' concerns about the EDC. And first thing is, I don't like the wording of our notices that we put in the paper. You know, specifically, it says, "The Board of Commissioners believes this project will stimulate the local economy, promote business, and result in the creation of a substantial number of jobs in the county." And it's a little presumptuous of us to put that in the paper when we don't know much about the project. So, I'm wondering if we can change the wording of that. And second thing is, I, I think that maybe we need to consider our economic development policies as they create to, as they relate to job creation. For example, you know, they may be putting in some highly technical equipment that requires less technical trained workers, but maybe the jobs they're adding in are night crew cleanup people. And when they calculate the hourly wage, you know, they may have a CEO in there who's making $250,000 a year, but the new people they add in are minimum wage workers and that obviously skews the hourly wages. So, I think that maybe that's something we, we need to have a further discussion about and get more data. I'm not aware, since I've been on this board in two years, I've not seen any employment data come to this board about jobs that have been created with incentives we're currently paying. Have I missed something?
In that report, I did, that showed the tax amounts that, that were generated back to the county from those industries that are located here. There is a spreadsheet in there that shows the number of jobs that those folks created.
But do they have the jobs classified? Like, what, I'm.
I just have total jobs.
I'm a believer in the development of human capital. And if an incentive involves training at CCCC to enhance the technical skills, I'm all for that. But if it's for non-skilled labor, I, I think, I would like to see the detail on those jobs that are created, is what I'm asking.
Well, we asked this information of the EDC board when we met in closed session. And I think that's the reason this was tabled today, was because we didn't have it.
Okay. Okay.
And, you know, this.
I just don't think we were ready to, to vote.
Um, there was information that we had all asked, but we, we didn't have, um, so, you know, I, I understand, it's not, EDC can just generate the information, they got to go to the, to the employer to get it, and, you know, you're on their account, so.
The notice of public hearing is almost word for word, the, of the, uh, the notice that is the example in, in this book that came from the Institute of Government, um, it does, the, the hearing does not have to say anything about the commissioners believing this project will stimulate, stabilize the local economy, it, it gives the basics that, how much they're investing and how much the actual incentive will be, those are the basics for the advertisement.
And I'd like to think that we just stick to the basics, and pull out this other stuff.
I'll go over that with, with, uh, Mr. Hughes. Reading is a dangerous thing sometimes.
So they create it and send it to you, and we just publish it with Gayle's name, is that the way it goes?
Actually, they create it and publish it.
Well, no wonder it sounds so.
Yeah, they, they, I was going to tell you, we've been right there.
Okay, well, Gayle signed it, as clerk, as our clerk, so, okay, well.
Gayle?
They plagiarized, true.
I'm just not happy with the wording, because that assumes that all commissioners are on board with this, and it's a little presumptuous before we have any information.
It ought to be just the basic.
What's that?
It should be just the basic.
The only thing that we agreed to was have the public hearing, and that's, that was it, right? Okay, Mr. Pascal?
No, sir.
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, one thing, uh, I did want to mention, and I forgot to, I had it in this, uh, front of this, uh, agenda package, uh, thank everyone who received a letter from, uh, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and, uh, where they have, you know, opposing the courthouse telephone system funding provision, and Senator Atwater has filed a bill in the Senate, uh, opposing this as well, and I think, I think we should, uh, send a letter of support, uh, in reference to this, to the association, and to, uh, our representatives in Raleigh.
I believe that's to be effective July 1st, isn't it?
Actually, there, it was, uh, effective last July 1st, and we've already spent some money at the courthouse based on that bill, I think it was around $10,000.
How much?
$10,000, and that was to put in the, um, telephone and IT lines to go with their voice-over IP system, and what they're actually trying to do going forward is push more and more of that cost to us, so it would be a good bill. Would be a good bill to support, so that we don't have to, uh, pay any future costs.
All right, die your motion that we send a letter to our representatives.
So moves.
Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. So ordered.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Crump, do you have anything further?
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
This, uh.
John, I mean, uh.
This is in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-3, 18-11, A and G. All right, good thing in the regular place.